I'd like to call the meeting of June 5th, 2019. Order.
Good evening, everyone. We have a couple of students here. They are the elected class presidents for their respective classes for the upcoming year. The class of 2020, Sarah Monroe, and of 2022, Aubrey McGinn. If you could come up here and start us and lead the pledge, that'd be great, and I have a certificate for you.
Where?
Come right up here.
Oh.
It's my duty.
Yeah, the next contestant, the prize is right. There we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please hold on one second.
Sarah?
I'm Aubrey. I'm very much on, like.
Motion on the minutes.
I'll approve.
There was Pam and Jim. Any discussion?
Yes. On page five, the, I have a, there's a statement there by me, and it's accurate, but it's repeated twice. Okay? Thank you.
That sounded like a really nice way to say, "You did such a good job, you did it twice."
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Well, your words are so important.
I just didn't want to hog all that space.
I'd like to make a change on the agenda. Seven, six, and seven, one are going to be reversed. I'm sorry, number six and seven will be reversed, so we'll do seven first, and then we'll go to six. And also, the auditor's report, because they're here, we'll start with that first, and that is the seven, one. So if we want to start with the auditors, come on down. There's a podium right over there, if you'd like. You should all have copies.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us to come present to you this evening. In front of you, you should have the two documents that we provided at the conclusion of our audit. One, the larger document, is your audited financial statements for the year end of June 30, 2018. The second document, the much thinner document, that's our communications to the board as a high-level summary of the results of the audit, and some key things to draw your attention to. Given the thickness of the financial statements themselves, we'll start with the smaller document, and then if you have any questions at all about the financial statements, as opposed to going through them page by page, we'd be more than happy to address them. Looking at the governance letter, which is the smaller document that you have there, first thing that we touch on is qualitative aspects of the district's accounting policies. And this basically draws your attention to key changes that were implemented during 2018, which may cause the financial statements to look a little bit different than they would have previously. For the district in FY 15, 18, the significant change is in the adoption of a new accounting standard that governs how the district reports and accounts for its other post-employment benefits. In the district's case, this is related to how the state mandates healthcare benefits be provided to employees. So there were some changes in how that benefit is valued, and how that benefit is reported. And that's really the biggest change when you look at this year's financial statements. Some of the larger numbers on your balance sheet are related to that. There's additional information in the notes to the financials, which is deeper in, roughly about halfway through the notes, it actually discusses those changes. Another key aspect of the significant accounting policies are the major estimates that impact your financial statements, and these are going to be the areas that are the most subject to change, or have the greatest level of uncertainty. Those really fall into kind of two categories. One is in how the district estimates the useful lives of its assets. Depending on whether or not those assets actually meet those life estimates, it could have an impact on how quickly they need to be replaced compared to what was planned, could impact future expenditures, those sorts of things. And then the other significant estimate would be the estimates that are used in valuing the district's post-employment benefit and pension liabilities, which again, those are the bigger liabilities on your balance sheet, so the fact that those are subject to a lot of estimation is pretty important to keep in mind. Finally, the third estimate is in the district's allowance for uncollectible receivables, and this is just because anytime you're owed money, there's a chance that you may not necessarily be able to collect it all. So the accounting standards say that you need to come up with an estimate of what you don't think you'll be able to collect. And again, just because it's an estimate, you may be right, you may be wrong, you may get it all, and so it's something to consider. Next, we have difficulties encountered during the audit. We encountered no significant difficulties that prevented us from performing the audit throughout the course of the engagement. We did identify several misstatements that, had they not been corrected, would have caused the financial statements to be materially misstated. They were corrected by management. There were no uncorrected misstatements by management at the conclusion of our audit. And at the end of this document is a listing of those material adjustments that were identified and corrected. We ran into no disagreements with management throughout the course of our audit, as far as, you know, application of accounting principles, or how certain things should be treated. And really, the other findings or matters, sections relate to our opinions that were expressed on the district's single audit. Part of the district's financial statement audit is also a single audit, which is triggered by the amount of federal expenditures that the district incurs on an annual basis. A single audit is primarily focused on compliance testing, was the district in compliance with the terms of its major federal grants and programs. For FY 18, we focused our testing on the special education cluster, so that was looking at your IDEA and your preschool grant programs, and we did not identify any areas of material noncompliance with either of those two programs. I will touch briefly on a couple areas of the financial statement packet, which is the larger packet. The first of which is at the beginning, which is our opinion, in the auditor's report section. And for FY 18, the district received an unmodified opinion on its financial statements. That's the quote-unquote "best opinion" that you can get. It means that the financial statements were presented fairly in all material respects, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The next area is towards the back, and begins on page 45, and these are our reports on internal control and on compliance related to financial reporting and on our grant compliance testing. And you'll find in those that we identified no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that would be required to be reported throughout any of our testing. I know you all have a pretty busy schedule tonight. If you have any questions about the specifics within the financial statements, I'd be happy to go as in-depth as you'd like.
Questions?
Yeah, hi. So one of the questions we had previously, I didn't know if you had that information, what were the areas of opportunity, the discussion items you had with management?
Sure.
I'm interested in understanding how we might use those to improve our processes going forward.
Yeah. I think the biggest area, as far as an opportunity to improve, is in the tracking and reconciliation of the grant activity. The district accounts for the bulk of its grants altogether, and grants oftentimes, from an accounting perspective, are somewhat different, in the sense that sometimes you'll just get a bunch of money upfront, and it's your responsibility to track it, and track how you're spending it and how much you've spent. Other grants are reimbursement-based, so you spend the money out of pocket upfront, and then you're reimbursed after the fact. The process that's best suited for tracking and reconciling that activity, because of the different nature of those two, is not always conducive to being tracked together. And that's how the district currently does it, is it's all tracked within a single fund. So if I had a recommendation that would probably best aid the district in that regard would be to segregate those out, come up with a better tracking system internally to know how much funds were received in advance, and then separate out the reimbursement-based type items. I think the other key areas that would be of value would just be to identify some of the items that are done oftentimes once a year, but because of the nature of them, would be much easier to be done if they were tracked progressively throughout the year. For example, tracking your fixed assets. So each year, at the end of the year, the district's accounting department will kind of try and compile together all of the different fixed assets, the equipment, the large-dollar items that are typically going to be held onto for more than a year, they're designed to serve an extended period of time. They'll have to go through the accounting records and sort of identify all the various things that happened throughout the entire year. Coming up with a process to identify those as they occur could significantly reduce the amount of time and effort that would go into kind of preparing that information at the end of the year, once it comes time to close.
So it's not necessarily a change in the practice, it's more of an improvement? There wasn't an error in the process, it just could be done more smoothly?
Exactly. More of an improvement to the workflow.
Yeah, okay.
Another question?
Yep.
Throughout the document, you made comments about you are not making any assessment on the internal controls, the adequacy of the internal controls or the internal control system, although you say that the audits that you did using the internal controls allow you to make a proper assessment of the financial positioning of the district. So why is the reason that you don't give an opinion on the internal controls themselves?
The level of testing that would be required to actually opine on the effectiveness of the internal controls is such that it's beyond the scope of a financial statement audit. There are audits designed specifically for that purpose. SOC audits are actually specifically designed for that. Our testing of internal controls is such to evaluate their effectiveness from a financial reporting perspective to aid us in risk assessment. When we approach an audit, one of the key elements that is addressed throughout the entire process of performing that audit is the evaluation or consideration of internal controls and the impact that those controls have on financial reporting. If controls are nonexistent, it tells us we need to do more work in the testing of the numbers and the details. If the controls are operating effectively, or effectively at some level, it allows us to place, you know, or it allows us to reduce the amount of detail testing that needs to be done, because you're able to place some reliance on those internal controls. So it's one step in our risk assessment, but the purpose of our audit is not necessarily to opine on their effectiveness. And that's why we say that we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls, but that they could exist, even though they were not identified as part of the audit, that significant deficiencies could exist.
Okay. I'll work with the business administrator. I'd be curious of finding out what it would entail to include internal audit review in the scope.
And how much it would cost.
Yeah, correct. Absolutely.
You gotta be extremely...
Just to make it simple, there are two types of audits. One is financial statement, and the other one's internal control. Okay? We've hired them just for financial statements. They do look at internal controls when they do financial statements, but it's not a test of just internal controls. To do that would probably double our audit fee. Okay? So instead of, and by the way, they're going to be our auditors next year, and so instead of paying them almost $15,000, it'd be more like $30,000 to get that done. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
We do have districts, we've done, like, they had a concern over purchase orders and whether they were being done at certain times, and so they hired us just to do, test a sample of like 60, or 100, or whatever, and we looked in and, to see if that particular control was being followed. So we do additional services in that area. If there's something specific, it's not just, you know, can you come do our internal controls, you know, it needs to be a little more focused and coming up with my sense.
Thank you. Part of our testing, too, is we'll inquire of, you know, management and district personnel, if there's areas of concern that they have, and that's part of our process in allowing us to custom tailor. A red flag is thrown out that, you know, I really think there's something going on here, then we may do additional testing in that area. It doesn't necessarily allow us to provide an opinion on the internal controls, even at that level, but it does allow us to kind of custom tailor areas based on risk.
And presumably, if you found some of those that had to custom tailoring, those would be part of your discussions of internal improvements with management?
Uh huh.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The manifest is working right around. Larry, do you have it?
It's coming back at you, yeah.
A couple nominations?
Do have nominations this evening. I'd like to nominate Kristin Tuker for speech and language pathologist, Angelica Gardella for school counseling, Brenda Gudrow, math interventionist, Abigail Presby, English teacher, and Stephanie Westergren, physical science.
So moved.
Second.
Pick one.
And Larry.
Discussion?
Are these renewals or new hires?
No, they're new hires. People have resigned, and we've had to fill their positions, and I think most of these are one-year positions in light of the reorganization, but a couple are full-time at the high school.
It was when there was a familiar name. Has she been with the district before?
Yes.
Okay. That's good.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Resignations? Going to read the following names that have submitted their resignations for approval. Alexia Karamatopoulos, Adam Mullen, Jody Tamayoshi, and Christina Koppel.
Those Greek names are tough. I'll say that again, those Greek names are tough.
I can say it very clearly.
I couldn't miss that, Ellie, I'm sorry.
Didn't do badly at all.
Thank you.
So you want a motion to accept their resignations with regret? So moved.
Second.
I'll let you choose again.
I think Carrie might have chewed out on them.
I think so.
Any further discussion, or any discussion, sorry? All in favor?
I just wanted to report a couple of things briefly. I did have a, at the, some parents wanted to know more information about the relationship of the potential reorganization in the YMCA. So I scheduled a meeting with the YMCA, and I just wanted to report to the board and the public that the YMCA, should the board choose to reorganize the elementary schools, the YMCA will be offering a kindergarten through sixth-grade program at each school in the morning and afternoons, so that parents can pick up and drop off their children at their neighborhood location. There'll be a bus that goes back and forth for the older and younger kids between Bakey and Memorial, and Mr. Angel and I will organize that busing, but that'll be part of the busing work, should we choose to make a change. I thought that was really positive, because a lot of parents had contacted me personally saying, "We need to drop people off and pick them up," and that's a real challenge in this process, so I was happy to hear that they were willing to work to accommodate that. I also wanted to report to the board that I had a wonderful meeting with the student council today. The student council is really fun. They, they asked, I asked them about vaping, what's going on in our schools, what's happening, and they gave me significant feedback that I'll be bringing to the high school administration next week to discuss in preparation for next year, and I thought their feedback was actionable, reasonable, and fair, and I certainly would prefer not to share with the entire world what they were saying would be the best way to catch people vaping. So I'm going to keep that to myself. Thank you very much, student council and adults involved. I also had a good conversation with the student council about the potential reorganization of the district. Probably the most, most interesting part of this process has been meeting with the middle school students and high school students and answering their questions, and having them ask questions. It was a very productive conversation, and they certainly gave me some feedback to consider. I don't think that they necessarily said anything that hadn't been heard, but they had already been said, but they had a lot of great questions that it just felt like they wanted to get answers to, and so we're going to strategize next Monday morning, the student council and I, about working with the students in the fall of next year to kind of work with them on any transition that might be coming up. So I just thought that you all would like to know what we've been up to, besides Facebook, emails, and phone calls, which have been a lot, but they've been very positive, and people have been very professional and good about asking questions and giving feedback, and I just, again, regardless of people's points of view in the community, I do continue to recognize that we have a wonderful community regardless of where you stand. People have been wonderful, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Committee reports. Policy.
The policy met on May 29th and discussed 20 revisions to policies in Section J. Board members Heath, Bridrick, and Brown attended, as well as Assistant Principal Dawson and Superintendent Ambrose. The committee reviewed and agreed to forward 17 of the J changes to the board for approval on June 12th. Three changes were tabled and revised. Policy EC was also reviewed and forwarded to the board. We also met today and reviewed five new policies for Section J, and a sixth we recommend repealing, and these additional six policies will be forwarded to board members by the end of the week for next Wednesday. As always, the policies we review and discuss are linked to the board's agenda, which can be posted, viewed on the SAU page, and is within the calendar of the district. And our next policy meeting date will be announced. It will be announced.
I saw.
The Excellence and Student Achievement Committee met on May 15th. In attendance, myself, Ms. Alessio, Director of Academics, Professional Learning and Student Affairs, Dr. Haines. Mr. Fitzpatrick was excused. Dr. Haines reported that the recent visit from New Hampshire Department of Education Commissioner Edelblut was productive. She also reported on the portrait of a graduate development work which is underway. The goal is to define the desired characteristics and qualities of a Sanborn graduate, which will help to inform the process of strategic planning. Meetings will be held with various stakeholders to develop a list of characteristics. These include students, business owners, parents, board members. Dr. Haines has met with elementary student council members and elementary teachers. Mr. Stack has met with high school student council members. Mr. Ambrose will meet with a parent group. A focus group will be convened in July to distill all of the lists to one single list of characteristics. The committee and members of the public who are present participated in this exercise. The final list of six characteristics was self-direction, critical thinking, emotional intelligence, metacognition or ability to learn, technological competence and collaboration. Others which were suggested included literacy and numeracy, or content mastery, civic literacy and communication. It was noted that skills are evolving and that automation is changing the jobs and skills that will be needed in the future. The Shaker Regional School District results were briefly discussed, as Mr. Ambrose was presenting them at that night's board meeting. Of note is their superior student performance with a similar demographic to Sanborn and a much higher number of free and reduced lunch recipients. They have a large number of intervention professionals, which contrasts with Sanborn's very low number. Dr. Haines stressed that our teachers are doing a great job, but are stretched too thin, and that they will benefit from added intervention resources, and top achievers should also benefit from those. Mrs. Collier of Newton commented on the importance of enrichment for top achievers, and Dr. Brown of Newton commented on the importance of content mastery in the profile of a graduate. Our next meeting is next Wednesday, June 12th, at 4:45.
Pete, is the July meeting selected yet for the focus group?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'd like to attend if you get them.
Sure.
Thanks so much.
Facilities, Jim?
Facilities met this afternoon, and I'll report on that meeting at the next school board meeting on the 12th, and the next facilities meeting is to be announced.
Well, finance?
Finance is meeting on this June, the 12th, at 3:45 PM.
Personnel?
Oh, we have a great meeting on July 26th at 5:00 PM in the SAU office.
I believe that's all the committees. Moving along. So you could vote student assistance counselor?
Um, the student council representatives' report?
Ah, why'd I miss that?
It's okay.
Well, because, you know, we've got a new person, so, and she's nervous.
She's fine. She's fine.
Adam, you want to introduce the young lady, please?
Yeah, before I get into my thing, this is Erin Gillespie. She's my replacement. She's an upcoming senior. She has been on student council for the past three years, and throughout the year, I've talked a lot with her, a lot about the different aspects of potentially being the student representative for the school board, and she's excited to get to work. So for the freshman class, their next year's president, you met tonight, Aubrey McGinn, they have a new class council. All the grades have new class councils. The sophomore class president, which you didn't get to see tonight, is Lucas Hanson. The junior class president for next year is Sarah Monroe. The seniors had their senior trip last Friday. It was a midnight cruise in Boston. That was really cool, it went awesome. We're getting ready for graduation on Friday, and that's really exciting, and we're getting ready for the rest of our lives after that, so. It's very scary, but.
You'll be fine.
I hope, I hope. But on behalf of the class of 2019, I want to thank the board and Mr. Ambrose for everything you guys have done, especially this past year, but these past four years as well. We really appreciate it. The student council reflected on the year, what we did, what we did well, what we could do better. Some new ideas came up for next year. Ms. Beauver has been an awesome advisor, especially it being her first year. She's starting to get a handle on things, and she's looking better, looking forward to taking on next year, and I know that we're thankful for it, to have her. She really stepped up this year. So the new student council is looking like, the historian is going to be Maddie Friedman, the public relations is going to be Julie Bond, secretary is going to be Erin, treasurer is going to be Jacob Thomas, vice president is Sophie Rowl, and the new student council, student council president is Ella Cotter. And that's it. I just want to thank you guys for being, for accepting me, letting me do my thing. I've enjoyed it.
It's been a pleasure having you with us.
I'm going to Wentworth Institute of Technology next year.
Wentworth, Boston?
Yep.
What are you studying?
Construction management.
Construction industry?
Management.
Management, yeah.
Good.
Yep, I'm excited for it.
Okay, stay in touch.
Yeah. Sorry. Yeah, sorry. I'm going to have Erin kind of go over what they did today and the new homecoming theme.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so as Mr. Ambrose said, we, he came, and we had a discussion about vaping in schools and how to get that under control, and the reorganization of the district and questions about that. We also decided on a homecoming theme. It was a unanimous vote for New England sports teams, so that's our homecoming theme next year.
Go Bruins.
I tried to vote for the rock bands, and they said I couldn't vote.
It'll be awesome, because if, when the Bruins win, you'll have three, three of the four major trophies.
Yeah, yeah.
And at the same time, that's pretty awesome. I self-expeditioned on them.
Okay.
Are you all set? Did that conclude your report?
Yes, it did.
All right, thank you very much.
Student assistance counselor?
Yes, I just needed to have the board make a motion for approval of the student assistance counselor contract for next year. This is the position that the state pays 50% of, and it's been a very, very effective position in our district. So for purposes of the grant and receiving 50% of the salary, the board needs to make a motion and approve that. that.
So moved.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Climbing wall, we're putting that on to.
Yes, oh, we didn't mention the Facilities Committee, Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Asked to have the climbing wall put on the next agenda so they could research the insurance.
Correct.
We recognize that it's being paid for through a grant, but I think it is, I talked to Mr. Angel and he said that he will look into that and have it ready for next week.
Okay.
Can I ask how that came about? The climbing wall? Who proposed that?
You, let me see.
Just out of curiosity, I mean.
The climbing wall will be implemented into the wellness curriculum that helps students meet the national standards in grade level outcomes in grades K through 5. The students will improve in the areas of balance, strength, coordination, teamwork skills, critical thinking skills, courage, trust and many others.
So, it came from within the Wellness Committee?
Uh, yes, it came.
Which hasn't met?
Uh, no, it came from the VZED books. The national standards.
I'm going to reserve comment in that until we hear from the facilities because I'm really surprised that this has come up. Really. We just approved a policy, what, last month? To form a Wellness Committee? I mean, and we're struggling with board members who are willing to participate on it and all of a sudden we have a climbing wall?
But my understanding was that this came up through the physical education wellness teachers, not, not, that wouldn't really be the function of the committee.
Still related.
What's that?
It's still related.
Oh, of course, yeah. Yeah, it's a curriculum-based item though. So, we can talk about that. It's fine. Yeah.
Can't wait to hear the insurance bid.
It'll be okay, but I'm not, I think it's worth double checking.
It's an eight-foot wall.
Which is small for climbing walls.
Yeah.
Very small.
Still get hurt.
Yeah. When I was a kid, we had the 24-foot peg wall. Uh, I don't know that I'd approve that anymore, but the climbing wall I'm pretty comfortable with. But it's good. We'll, we'll get back on that.
They should know about it.
I will invite Mrs. Parity Gay to answer your questions regarding that.
Okay. Going to be fun.
I believe that's going to be on the next agenda.
That'll be on our next agenda. Thank you.
Okay, public comments. Before we start with the public comments, obviously, this is a passionate issue. The rule is 20 minutes for public comment, three minutes each. I have a feeling we're going to run over 20 minutes. So, with the board's indulgence, I'd like to make a motion to go to 40 minutes and then we'll continue after 40 if need be after another discussion. But, can I get a second on that? Actually, I'm not even sure it needs to be a motion, but let's do it.
Yeah, yeah. You don't need a motion to do that.
Let's do it anyway. That way, everybody's in agreement.
Second.
But look at the three minutes.
Oh, the three minutes. We'll stay to three minutes, yes. You know. There were a lot of people here. I'm sure there's some more people going to be coming. If someone has said what you are going to say, and I know that's difficult to keep it in you because you want to get it. If you're ADHD like me, you've got to get it out. And I understand that. But because of the time restraints, also, this is for public comment. We have had informational meetings and how many of those have we had? Four or three?
Well, we had a public forum on May 15th and then we had the two board meetings prior to that where we presented the options. We had a public forum in September, but I think that, that in regard to the elementary reorganization, the big public forum was on making.
And how many emails would you say you had?
I can't even begin to account for that.
Hundreds and hundreds.
A lot.
So, you know. So, also on public comment, school board doesn't usually respond. It's a comment issue, not a dialogue. Doesn't mean we don't, doesn't mean we haven't in the past, but just so you'll know that if we remain silent, it's not because we don't have anything to say, but that's usually the procedure for those of you who don't come that often at these meetings. So, again, it's a comment on your part. We won't necessarily discuss or respond. And if you can keep it to three minutes, please, I don't really like to gavel people. And if someone else has said what you're going to say, if you can, and we'll go 40 minutes and three minutes each. So, who wants to be the first contestant on The Price is Right?
Cheryl.
What a surprise. Cheryl, what do you got?
Somebody has to be first. Nobody was making a move for that idea.
Also, if you would, I'm sorry Cheryl, not to interrupt you, please give your name and what town you're from so that fellows can write it down.
Cheryl Gannon from Kingston. I wanted to say that I appreciate the, what the administration did on May 15th and the, all the hard work that they put into answering the questions that were submitted by the voters and then taking questions that night at the public forum. I think, having been there and having been to a lot of the meetings preceding that, that some people who are new to the district might not appreciate, and that is the history of our district budgets. In about the past 10 years, our budget has passed once, and that was actually twice. Once, when it was just $66,000 over the default. Once, when it was the same as the default. It was defeated six times. There were times that it was less than the default. That's when it passed. We also did not pass teacher contracts for three years. This is not a very good track record of supporting the proposed budgets. It's kind of confounding as to why the budget keeps going up despite enrollment dropping. There are a lot of things that we have to pay for now that we have not paid for 10, 20 years ago. One that was mentioned tonight, the drug and alcohol council. That is a problem in our community. We must fund that. Technology has become the center of what we do in teaching. It's not just the hardware, the software, replacements, maintenance, staff on the help desk. All of these things, despite our enrollment, still need to be paid for. Fact that our teachers haven't had a contract is very disheartening and it means that we have to hire new people and train them, which impacts the consistency and continuity of the instruction. So, while this reorganization that's being proposed is a very difficult change to look at, we don't like to think, is it money or is it going to be instruction? We need to face the reality that this district has an abysmal history of passing budgets. So, we need to consider that and what we're going to do to be able to support what the district needs and also to support the community, which we know is an aging community. I hope that we can all come together and come to a compromise and work together as a community as we face this very, very difficult decision. Thank you.
Where are the public comments? Come on down. If you do have public comments, if you would, so that I'll know that, if one could like, is there a chair there? Yeah, perhaps stand behind and I'll know that there's, I'll know when we're done. Yes, sir.
Patrick Kelly, K E L L Y, New Hampshire. I just, I'll keep it very brief. I, I understand that so long as the $1.4 million is allocated to intervention, this probably could be the best solution for our students. But as a community, I'm just a little bit worried about the process and I've come to that conclusion after talking with parents and getting feedback as I try to get informed. They say, they already know what they're going to do. The school board's already made up their mind. And they asked me, why do I even bother? So, it's comments like these that lead me to caution the process a little bit. And I just wanted to say that, say my piece and that's it. Thank you.
So, I'm Melissa Hilfer. I'm from Kingston. Last time I met here with you all, I spoke a little bit about the after and before school program, but today I'm foicing my concerns regarding the multitude of changes that will take place. I think a lot of people have expressed a passion for intervention. I can see why that is a very attractive option. Many children utilize those services and could be better served by more people able to provide them. But my concern is, were we to implement this intervention strategy on top of the shifts in location, paraprofessionals, teachers, intervention specialists, busing, all of these different pieces that are kind of in flux because of the changes, how are we going to pull the data from these changes to see if the interventions are truly working in the way that we intended them to do? It's just a concern because you may have a student that would have flourished, remaining at Bakey, let's say, or remaining in Memorial, that being pushed into a different school, they can't access the intervention in a way that they might have otherwise in a place that was familiar to them. How are we going to know and be able to relay to the people that yes, this intervention was valuable, successful, because we have the data to say so, when there may be some kids who can't even make the most of it because they're still dealing with the transition itself and the anxiety that may have brought upon them? So, it's just something that I'm concerned as a parent, as a educator. I have a background in education myself. Certain populations struggle with even the simplest of transitions that other people don't even make note of. Moving a school is a large transition for many kids. And I just think that that's something that is going to be difficult to justify when we can't show the data. So, that's all. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michael Gannon, Kingston. I have some good news I want to pass along. And this has to do with the middle school. Several weeks ago, when we had the meeting over at the new auditorium, I spoke about athletics and the sixth grade possibly not being involved in it. Over the past week, or just over a week, I, I was delighted to be part of a middle school track team that won its tri-state county championship. The girls. The girls won their championship for the fourth year in a row. The boys won, give it up to the ladies. Boys won for the third year in a row. Tuesday, which was yesterday, I believe, right? It's been some long weeks with these track meets. Tuesday was the state track meet and it was called the Champ, the Meet of Champions. And there were 69 schools represented at this. And your Sanborn school placed four kids in first place. Well, four of these and we had other students that did extremely well also. We had some seconds and thirds and sixth, they were all medal winners or ribbon winners and certainly stood out for the, for the Sanborn community. Those four first-place winners, as I thought about it, all started out on the team and contributed as sixth graders. My fear, as it was several weeks ago, is that we can call it this chain of athletes is going to be cut back. Track is not the only sport that will happen. We've had terrific success and along Mr. Rutherford. We've been promoting this success throughout the school with, through various means of communication, because the kids have done a great job. My fear is that we're just going to end up shortchanging ourselves and then eventually moving to the high school. The experiences in there, the opportunity to get these kids involved at an early age, promote the, the program that we have, promote the success that exists. We're going to shortchange ourselves and I think that would be a shame for the Sanborn community.
Before I get started, I'd like to ask you to take a look at your policy for public comment. And the policy doesn't indicate that you have a time constraint, nor does it go ahead and indicate how many times that I could come up here and actually speak.
That's fine.
So, for, because of that, I would like to consider at you, asking the board to allow me to maybe speak for four minutes, because quite frankly, there's multiple agenda items which I'm going to be touching upon.
Why don't you go and see how it goes?
Okay. Thank you very much. Hi, my name is Corey Mason, a resident of Newton and someone who's been immersed and worked in municipal government and public education for over 20 years. During the day, me and my governance coaches work with the school district that has more students and buildings than this entire state of New Hampshire combined. If we observe, if we were observing, auditing and advising the community members, staff, superintendent and you, the school board during this process of redistricting, and if we looked at the current stage for which we were here in Sanborn today, I'd be asking and many of my board members who've been observing this would all be requesting that you slow the process down. There are far too many risks. What are some of the risks and evidence that this community, staff and district are not ready for your decision in redistricting, regardless of what it may be? First, culture and public relations, first evidence here. Principal Stack, thank you for attending this evening. I recognize that you have always presented at the Senior Sports Awards and wherever you are, over there. I know this is probably a hard night for you to be here and not there. That's a shame and that is impacting the culture for which many of the students look forward to that event. Parent, parents and guardians, we hear over and over here, over the, that more parents need to be involved tonight, that we should take a look here. My, my wife could not be here because my daughter fell asleep. There's, Safe Sanborn has an event this evening and we should recognize that, what are we doing to assure success in setting measures? The truth is, we should all be asking, what are we doing to assure staffing, school board? I ask, would you advise, how did you include the staff that are here? School, I'd ask you, do not make a decision until you have the staff participated in workshops together. Here's a quote from the April 3rd, 2019 presentation by Superintendent Ambrose. "I want to remind everyone that this plan is an overarching outline of what it will look like. There are a lot of estimates and should the board choose to make a move to have the middle school students attend the high school facility, there's further work to be done." That was just April 3rd. He then goes on and says that, "We'll be extremely collaborative with the staff" and indicates the staff haven't been involved. You're putting your only employee at risk here. You're impacting the community culture of the buildings. And last but not least, where's Fremont at the table? Why is the Fremont board not at this table right now? Where is the superintendent helping, superintendent al, endorsing this discussion? You're putting the community culture of Fremont at risk. Moving on to financial discussions. There are far too many risks when it comes to finances. We have a new business administrator who came into this process mid-strive. I'm not sure how many of you all know that. There is no real plan, as indicated in overarching outline, we potentially have greater costs. Fremont, again, where is, where are they? How many millions of dollars does Fremont bring into our discussion, into our budget? Four million maybe? And where are they right now? They should be part of this discussion. Over the last, so, talking about financials, past practice in history, the past practice in precedent was to have the school board return unencumbered funds and the money left over in the budget to the community. Over the last four years, Dr. Brown, Ms. Mahoney, Chairman Broderick, you all urged, and Mr. Baker, you've all urged to have the funds returned back to the community. These funds totaled $3.4 million with $1.5 million last year. Again, how much did Fremont see of that? Not a penny. We roughly have $3.5 million in CPI items that have been presented. If we had a plan, where would that $3.5 million that we gave back go? Where's the plan? Last subject, math, facilities. Trying to expedite myself here, sorry. Your past practice has been to move it to vote. And I recommend you all take a step back and look at the history of warrant articles and what many of you have all requested and said, albeit in your, as NKTA members, albeit as public members, albeit as board members. Chairman Broderick, you on countless occasions before taking the chair position would say, there are hard decisions to make and we should be putting it to vote. I suggest that everyone takes a look at the September 21st, 2016 minutes and later. I suggest that everyone takes a look at the September 21, 2016 minutes and later through the 2016 season. From Ms. Mahoney to Mr. Baker to Dr. Brown to Budget Committee Chair Collier, Chairman Collier, and you, Mr. Broderick, you said the voter is king. How do you solve for all this and these risks and concerns? I'd like to hand out to you after a spectrum of public participation. School districts who are going through this redistricting process ultimately leverage tools like this to assure that stakeholders, even those who have different points of views, have a say. If you like the goals, promises, you'll find that we're only column two out of five. I've asked many other community members who've also done their assessments and they think we're only column two out of five. School boards that have... My other question is, and I would challenge you...
Corey, you've actually gone over four. You're actually at five.
Okay. Where is the redistricting committee that includes that staff back there? Because their voices need to be heard.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ashley Paige from Kingston. I'll try to read fast. I'm here tonight as a voice for teachers and community members who oppose this plan. I'm a teacher and Bakey parent. After reviewing almost two years of minutes, my head is spinning as to how we got here. Let's take a moment to reflect on past meetings through the lens of student achievement and what we decided to do to close the performance gap. At the start of the 2017-18 school year, professional development was the charge to help close the gap. During the November 15 meeting, there was extensive discussion on professional development. The minutes read, "In previous budgets, the professional development line has been slashed in order to preserve student programming. In order to improve student learning and outcomes, we no longer can ignore the need for ongoing teacher training." A proposed $75,000 was added to the budget for PD and members of this board tried to cut that number down. In December 2018, we just developed a relationship with Columbia University to help our teachers recommit to the literacy workshop model. The workshop model can take years to perfect and it seems that we are in year one of the renewed focus on this approach. In my professional opinion, not enough time has been given to see how this initiative has or has not improved student achievement. At the January 11, 2018 meeting, a Newton resident stressed, "Professional development is a process that involves taking steps towards a high function in growing and improving school district. Many teachers are taking training and I've commented that they need time to incorporate their training so this doesn't happen overnight. Furthermore, Dr. Brown mentioned, professional development is a work in progress. So, we want to look at the arc and see what progress we can make over a two-to-five-year plan." I completely agree. The takeaways from these meetings are, one, it seems there has been a charge to increase professional development to help our students, and two, it will take time, maybe even years, to see how increased PD affects student achievement. Looking back again, the board asked Mr. Ambrose, what solutions cost would you implement in funds and logistics where unlimited? In a hypothetical list that costs upwards of $1 million, not once was intervention mentioned as a solution to the performance gap. As the concerns over the reconfiguration of the elementary schools grew, I could not help but notice the intervention argument ramp up. I agree, a tiered intervention model is best practice. I agree that short-term intervention prior to a referral process is extremely important. If intervention had a reputation, the way it has been used to get people to vote for this plan has severely devalued it. At times, it is even called early intervention, which is something entirely different than the academic intervention students over the age of three need. Stating there's a $1.5 million need for intervention and that this plan is the only way to fix it is not fair. I want to be clear, I am not against more resources for our children, however, I'm against it being used as propaganda or an ultimatum. Mr. Broderick, in response to public pushback, he said, "But I'll tell you, if we don't put a good amount of financial resources into intervention, I'm going to be one very upset guy." And Mr. Ambrose even said that one of the options to do nothing and fund the intervention for $1.5 million. Where was this fight years ago to fund student needs? Unfortunately, now they sound more like threats as opposed to presenting solutions to the performance gap. Mr. Ambrose, he said, "At the August 15, 2018 board meeting, this process will do one of two things. Bring the communities together or it will divide us. The attitude in which we approach this process will define which one of these two things happen." My question to the board, when you look back at this process, can you honestly say you did everything in your power to bring our communities together for the greater good of our students? I'm begging you to dig deeper into current practices, what the teachers need, and variables that have been overlooked before you make this decision. Thank you.
Joanne Corvo, Newton. I truly get that we don't have any money. And if this is the only decision that has to be made, then I will find a way to get my kids through this. But I feel like it will be because of me and in spite of the rash decisions that is being made in this board. I understand budgets, but what I do strongly disagree with is that the implementation of intervention is going to save the day and save Sanborn. It is a tool. Look on Monster.com and most interventionists don't need any more education than a regular classroom teacher. And as our budget has said time and time again, if they do have more education than a regular classroom teacher, Sanborn can't afford them. I could apply for this job, but I do not want it. We are taking away teachers and adding interventionists. It's a wash. And I have to tell you, when you're telling me that everything is going to be fine and all kids are going to survive, that is simply not true. I can tell you this. My daughter, who scored at a 90th percent talent in both math and reading, she's not going to need any of your intervention. But what she does need is the classroom teacher that promised her that if she stopped crying and she got through school every day, that she would have lunch with her. That was her special date. That was her classroom teacher. They said, oh, when the teacher advised me, you know what? Talk to a doctor about her anxiety. They told me that structure is vital. Oh, the structure is only in the classroom? I strongly disagree. After April vacation, when my daughter was clinging to my leg, afraid to go to school because a little girl was threatening to bite her in the classroom pretending she was a dog, you know what helped her? I walked her into class. Her secretary met her with a smile. Her aide came over and gave her a hug. And that's what kept her in school. My kids are not going to need your interventionist, but this plan fails my child.
Christine Cowden, Kingston. I feel we were sold something very different when Article 8 was discussed prior to it passing. I thought by voting to pass it, I was doing what was in the best interest of our children and our future. I regret my naivete in trusting those that kind of broke it down for the public. And I severely regret voting for it. It is unfortunate that the passing of that article essentially and literally took the vote away from the community and put it in the hands of the school board. I wish that after poring through all the minutes from the last two years of school board meetings, my faith had been renewed in the process. But honestly, my research brought to light discrepancies after discrepancies. Trends of the past, namely putting everything to a public vote, getting pushed aside completely now, and we're rushing towards this decision and it's not our decision. And I just don't understand why everything previously went to vote with the public and now all of a sudden it's not. I clearly identified a progression of a clear agenda to forward option three as the only option. At some point, all research stopped if it didn't forward that option number three. Intervention became a playing chip or a pawn and it's being used now as leverage to pass this and do it quickly. I think that all of this contributes to the community feeling that the train has left the station. It also kind of diminishes my belief in the process. I don't think that we need to be moving so quickly. I ask that we please slow this down and think about the children and how this affects them. I know that there's a bottom line and that money comes into effect and taxes are very touchy. I completely understand that. But I think somewhere along the way, we forgot that these children are going to be uprooted, moved around. Some of the kids are going to have to go to third grade in one school, fourth grade in another school. You know, like, it just, it seems like we need to stop and slow down and think a little bit more. And I just can't stress enough how I feel a little bit... I don't know if betrayed is the word. I feel like Article 8 really kind of put us on this path and that maybe had we understood it a little more, this wouldn't have happened. And you guys even said yourselves that you didn't think it was going to pass so quickly. Well, why? What was wrong with it? It's basically because we were giving up the vote.
Oops, there's one. Sorry. Come on down.
Erin Lavalli, Kingston, New Hampshire. I guess I just kind of wanted to touch upon maybe like the emotions of things and how I'm feeling. I can't believe that I'm here. And I mean that in the sense that I feel like I just took my baby home from the hospital and now he comes downstairs every morning and he's just slowly slipping away because he's growing so fast. And I just feel like this whole thing just pushed the fast-forward button again. And all we really want as parents, and especially as parents when they're young, is to just keep them close. And when we feel them slipping away, it tears at your heart. So, if there's any way that we could just think about this a little bit more, have some more parent involvement before we make this decision, it would really... I think people would feel better. I think people would feel more comfortable about it if this is the direction it has to go. But right now, it just doesn't feel right. And I think I'm speaking for a lot of parents, too. It's the feeling and it just feels like we weren't involved.
Hi, I just want to put in a request to really ask the board, to implore you really, to pause on making this decision. When I look at these options, what I don't see here is the high school. And to me, that poses the greatest need. So, when Fremont leaves in six-ish years, what's going to happen? So, for me, the school board right now has this tremendous opportunity to create a great vision, a great business plan for the town. Let's come up... I'd like to hear you guys come up with a great plan for the town, for the future, for the high school. Let's pull in other high schools. Let's price adjust comparatively to Pinkerton. We can offer a smaller campus. There's so many options that we can offer with the high school that would appeal to lower taxes for the Newton-Kingston Taxpayer Association while at the same time improving student goals. And the students would not necessarily have to be redistricted. You really have this opportunity. And to move forward before solidifying the high school, I think puts the towns and the students in great jeopardy. It's a pass that, it cuts off other options. We're moving towards this pass at the middle school here, that takes that away. And then, what's the future? The future I see is pretty bleak. It's just the declining enrollments and everybody at the high school. Let's come up with a good plan. You have the ability. You can lower the taxes and increase the high school. You could make the high school this magnet school. Pinkerton really is falling from grace in the eyes of parents. It is growing too big, too fast, and it's about the, one of the few options. And I know they're pricing out 12, 14 different towns. Let's find a way to make our high school comparatively priced. You could increase the value of your homes and you really could lower the taxes and you really could... Everybody could come to the table and really feel really good about it. So, that is my plea to you, to please just pause. Figure out the vision for the high school that will help, it really will. There's a solution there that can solve everybody. And I ask you to look at that before you move forward with these plans that cut that out. And I don't see a good future this way. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Could you give us your name?
Yeah, Pam can...
Pam, you want to bring that up?
Oh, yeah.
So, before I share the different options, which I know you all have in the audience, the board asked me to prepare a couple of slides just summarizing the different options that have been discussed. I do want everyone in the public to know that we have been engaged in conversations with Fremont. We met with the Fremont School Board last week and I have personally talked to a couple of different high schools about the potential of coming here. And the reality is that New Hampshire has 175,000 students. We are losing 55,000 students in the state of New Hampshire, just based on live births. Our district has lost 4,000 students in the last 10 years. We were at 2,000 students 10 years ago. We're at 1,600 students now. And in the next 10 years, we are projected to be at 1,200 students with Fremont. If Fremont pulls out, we will be below 1,000 students district-wide. Our current seeded-in-school second-through-fifth graders are 360 students. In four years, they will be in high school. We will have 360 students in our high school should Fremont choose to go to another community. We are working hard and we are working the best we can, but you have to remember, we can't just change the tuition. The tuition is done through a very complex binding legal document that would have to be ratified by at least a portion of the voters before we could change Fremont's tuition. So, I want you all to know that there isn't anything that's been said this evening that hasn't been thoroughly looked at, but some may not be publicly reported on because it's in progress. And I appreciate your comments sincerely. Everyone has been incredibly civil and realistic and reasonable and I couldn't be more grateful for that. Thank you. So, the first options that we talked about, as option one obviously is to do nothing. Status quo. Parents have repeatedly asked to have that considered. That would mean that we would renovate the middle school at $1.6 million. We would fund the intervention programs for academic needs at $1.4 million, which is a $3 million cost. $786 per home, $300,000 home in Newton. $597 in a $300,000 home in Kingston. Please remember, the teachers' contracts were a separate warrant article and are not included. They are an additional $160. Option two, seventh and eighth grade at the high school and sixth grade to the elementary was presented in early April. That means that there'd be no money cost to renovate the middle school. The academic intervention would be about $1.4 million. And over a two-year period, we would start to save about $750,000 a year after the capital costs of improving the high school, changing the high school to accommodate seventh and eighth grade, including a locker room, main office, and multi-student bathrooms. That would be $171 a year or $129 in Kingston. So, Newton, $171, Kingston, $129. Option three, move pre-K3 to Bakey, four to six to Memorial, and seven and eight to the high school facility. It's $1.4 million for the intervention. And over a two-year period, we would begin to realize $1,400,000 in savings after the capital costs of the middle school at the high school, which would result in a zero-dollar-per-year increase. Board members also asked me to create an alternative option so they could get a sense because of our declining enrollments. This was presented when I presented the elementary plan, because I only addressed elementary in that plan. It's a K to eight intervention only, pre-K3 move to Bakey, four to six at Memorial, and seven to 12 at the high school. We did analyze, obviously, $0 for renovation, $950,000 over year one and two after capital costs for 11 paras and six teachers. And the savings from reorganizing pre-K8 would be $1,400,000. The total savings is $450,000 that would reduce taxes in Newton by $117 a year and in Kingston by $90 a year. But I want to also remind people that teachers' contracts are not included in any of these proposals. So, the actual tax impact on the alternate option is about flat when you include the teachers' contracts. So, at this time, I'm turning this over to the school board for deliberation because I feel, I do want to say, I have worked with a lot of administrators and I have never worked with a better team. The people on our team as administrators have worked night and day to create these plans, talk to people, and work together to try to present reasonable options for consideration by the board. If anyone has any questions from the board, I'll be happy to answer them.
Why don't we start with a motion and then a second, and then we'll have discussion concerning this issue.
I move that we proceed with discussion, I guess. Is that what you want? Or do you want an actual motion?
Well, we need a motion out of the discuss, so you want to...
Well, then let me do your motion.
Pick one of these, or, I mean, I don't know.
I have a motion.
Whatever your motion is, go for it.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to adopt the alternative reorganization option included in the slides presented by Mr. Ambrose this evening. This motion includes moving the SAU office, moving seventh and eighth grade to the high school facility, PK3 to Bakey School, grades four and six to the Memorial School, using the money saved to fund K8, K through 8 academic intervention with 11 pairs and six teachers, and return the excess estimated amount of $450,000 to the taxpayers. That's the motion.
So that is option three? Am I correct?
That is option four.
Oh, the alternate. Okay, all right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. What I'm going to do is I'm gonna start with Larry and go right down. Is that all right with everybody?
Okay. We have four options on the table. Of the four options, we have one that we absolutely do nothing other than put in the intervention and then pay a small fortune to repair an old building. Two, we have another one that allows us to move seventh and eight to the high school and update the middle school. It was zero update to the middle school. And K through 12 intervention of $1.4 million. This is a total cost coming out to $650,000 with the savings of $750,000. The tax increase in Newton, as we've already seen on the things, is $171 for the first year. And kindergarten, $129,000, oh, for Kingston, $129,000. Can't even read my own notes here. Third option, which we've been talking about for a long time, is essentially move seventh and eighth grade up to the high school and then zero maintenance for the middle school. And we'll have intervention for K through 12 at $1.4. What this gives us is effective use of teachers, reduced bus routes by two approximately, and savings on outlines by the superintendent over the list of the last few months. This resulting in a zero tax increase for both towns. The fourth option, which is the one that I made the motion for, is zero renovation for the middle school. The K through 8 intervention. This is a $950,000 for year one and two after capital cost. Savings from the reorganization is still $1.4 million. The total savings is $450,000. This is tax savings. And the reason I'm not saying what the superintendent said is that the tax, the teacher's contract is approved for the year 19. When you approved it in March, that is for this year. So this year will not go into effect instead of 20 next year. So there's no reason to set there because it's already in the budget. So as far as I'm concerned, this is a win-win for both the students and the taxpayers. They both win, not just one or two, but all. This is a program that has changed a lot from when it first started. We started this 18 months ago. Where were all these people that have questions now 18 months ago? It is time to make a decision and it's time to stop kicking the can down the street. Let's vote and get this over, one way or the other.
Any comments? Well, I'm gonna go straight down the board.
Okay, all right. I have a few things to say. And I'm gonna begin by first thanking all the individuals who took the time to send us letters. I tried to respond however briefly to all of them. I missed a few, I'm sure. And I came late to the table. I came in here in November, and so this was already an ongoing discussion. And when I first heard about the proposal of splitting the elementary schools, I knew the toughest part was going to convince the parents, even though from then it was almost two years away. We're still 15 months away. If we agreed to do this now, we're still 15 months away. And all the participation in the discussions, both online, offline, and behind the scenes, we still need all of those parents, all of you, to come forward to help with the different sections. I'm gonna assume this is gonna pass. And in honesty, I've told a number of you, I did not know how this was gonna go with the board because I have not talked to every board member. I've talked to two, and the two agreed with me that we need to go forward. And I do believe that. But, and there's two reasons why, two real huge reasons besides delaying it because of parent anxiety. There isn't a board member here that doesn't understand what you parents are gonna go through with those young children. Absolutely. And a lot of people in the town who no longer have children in the school have said to me, "I don't have a dog in that hunt. It makes sense, but you might wanna consider the parents." I don't think you guys are gonna change your minds. And I say that sincerely from the bottom of my heart. I don't see how you're gonna change your mind. This is a huge change, absolutely no question. No question about it. But we've got two problems. And one of it is increasing taxes. This is not a Newton-Kingston taxpayer issue. It's a community issue. The way we fund our schools is through the property tax. We do not have a broad-based tax. And whatever those jamokes up in Concord are doing, they're not sending any money back here. In fact, if anything, they're diverting it elsewhere. And that's not gonna change. I personally would rather have my money, my tax dollars, stay in town because I can vote. I can go say whether the chief needs another fire truck, or if the police department needs another officer, or if the schools need a new building. I'm voting here in town, and I prefer to spend my money here because we have control over it. No question about it. But we have lost more than 400 students in the last 10 years, and the projection is still to go lower. We've got 1,600 kids, 600 in the high school, 200 of which are from Fremont. But that means we only have 400 Kingston and Newton kids in the high school. It's my responsibility as a sitting board member to watch out for our money. And while I agree, it sometimes seems like the intervention piece is the carrot. When you look at what we've done with our budget, Mrs. Gannon was right. I looked at the last 12 years of our budgets, two passed. Two budgets passed. How are you gonna implement an intervention program when we can't even pass a budget? And they don't lose by, most of the years, not by a lot of votes. Will we lose it by six votes this year? That's terrible. Ten. Okay, I stand corrected. But I can't ignore the money part of this. There's just no way. We haven't even looked at some of the class sizes in the high school. We have in the elementary, and they're pretty low. And they're below that standard that we have set as a board for this district. That's a good thing on one hand, as a parent, and it's for the education of the kids. It's not such a good thing from the taxpayers' point of view. And I can't believe I'm the one talking on behalf of the taxpayers because I've always been considered a spender when it came to the schools. And I still wanna spend. I'm not telling I don't. But you have to have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers to spend wisely. If we only passed two budgets in the last 12 years, how are we gonna implement anything else? Look at the abysmal rate of passing teacher contracts. We lose so many good people. They call Bedford High School Sandborne West because we lost so many of our teachers there. Why? Because they're making $7,000 to $10,000 more a year. Our guys lost three years of pay increases, and they'll never catch up. That's not a good thing for us. By losing our budgets, either through getting a default or whatever, we let our buildings go. Those of you that don't know me, I served on the board from the 80s and the 90s. We had spent, for five or six years in a row, we allocated over $100,000 a year for six years, $600,000 in 1980s dollars to repair the exterior of the Sandborne Seminary building. And we did. The outside of that building is beautiful. When was the last time any of you saw inside? It's deplorable. It's the only way I can describe it. It's a shame that we let that building go. But prior boards and superintendents, no one here, let it go because they lost their budget. So what are they gonna do? They're gonna cut on maintenance. And we have traditionally done that in our district. And not just the last 20 years, probably 40, because that's the easiest place to let go. So now we have a mausoleum, a building that's on the national register, and it's laying fallow. And to make matters worse, a few years ago, someone forgot to put heat in the, oil in the tanks, and the building, the pipes froze. That created even more of a mess. Town of Kingston asked the district three years ago if we could start talking about purchasing or acquiring the property from the school district. We met for two and a half years. We came close. We came darn close. And then we couldn't, we couldn't have, didn't have time to survey the land to be able to make a swap. It would have been perfect. But I'm not even sure it would have passed in Kingston, quite honestly, because it would have been at least $3.5 million to repair that building, dealing with asbestos and God knows what else. That's without even taking off a piece of wood off of one of the window frames to see how rotted it was on the other side. So $3.5 million, like I said, I'm not even sure Kingston would have taken the building even for zero or for a land swap. But now, as we talk about moving, emptying out another building, where does that leave us? It scares me to death. Now we're gonna have two buildings laying fallow. If we do nothing else after this meeting, we need to form a group, a task force, not a committee, as a conjunction with our facilities, and get together some developers and some of you parents and some of the local real estate agents and actively solicit and elicit solutions to both the middle school and the high school property. We have to put on our big boy and girl boots and start dealing with the reality of our fiscal condition. And it's in very bad shape. We would never get a mortgage with the kind of debts we have in falling properties. Fremont is, I'm sorry, Mr. Mason was not able to stay, but he's correct about approaching Fremont. They don't have a seat at the table. They are renters. They pay, they tuition their kids in. But their input is important because we want to keep them happy. And we've partnered with Fremont for over 40 years. And sometimes that partner leaves us. It's like having a bad weekend with your husband or wife, and you go away to Maine for a kind of cool-off period. That's what happens between Sandborne and Fremont periodically. It's not a bad thing because they really, the nature of the town of Fremont with the Sandborne District is one. I mean, we really are an extended community. And we have, we don't wanna screw our neighbors. We don't. I don't think anyone on this board does. But our costs are high. And part of their cost being high is the contract they have with us pays for some of the capital costs. It's $2,500 a student. They don't have that at Pinkerton. They also have, what, 3, 3,500 kids over there. We're hoping they stay with us. We did meet with them last week. It was a very productive discussion. And Fremont folks raised some very good questions. And one of them was, and I don't know, I hope I'm not speaking out of tune. I don't think so, but what are they gonna do? Take away my birth? Yeah, that's a friend of mine that sent that to me. I'm sorry. The question for Fremont was, if you move the seventh and eighth grade into the high school, does that mean that Fremont pays less cost per student? And what they were saying was, if we bring in 300 students from our middle school into the wing and we do the conversion, that means we got 300 more Sandborne students using heat, 300 more Sandborne students using maintenance, using snow plowing, all those factors that go into computing what the tuition is. And we said, yes, if the board goes forward and implements that change in 2020, not this year, a year from now, that has to be factored in to be fair to our tuition students. It's the only way to go. Now, in six years, that $2,500 piece of it for the capital cost goes away. Goes away for them and for us. But that doesn't mean we can't offer other opportunities for Fremont. And districts everywhere are always looking to, can they reduce, those that tuition their high school kids always look for other opportunities in other districts. The good news is, people are coming to us. As bad as our math scores have been, and they've been deplorable, I believe is the word I like to use for them, people still look to us because we have so many other assets available for our school. And that's a credit to our administrative team and to our teaching staff that are really very, very good. Can't tell you we don't have a couple of sour grapes, but we probably do. But I don't know about them. And I know as a, in Hall, we have a very, very good system. We're not the top in the states of New Hampshire. We're right in the middle. And I think we provide a very good, comprehensive high school and elementary school education. And a lot of these kids are very successful. When you, if you come to graduation Friday and it looks like we're gonna have the weather so more people can come, you're gonna hear about some of the fantastic schools that these kids have gotten into. One of the better classes I've seen come out of Sandborne in a long time. And we should all be very, very proud of them. It's not a matter of going to UNH just because it's the only one that'll take them. And I challenge anyone to say that to my face these days because that's not the case. We have some very talented students. And you know, it's not just a credit to Sandborne and the staff and students, teachers we have here. It's a credit to you parents. Because if you parents aren't behind your kids, there isn't anything we're gonna do here that's gonna make an improvement on your input with your children and your house. I didn't mean to talk as much as, I haven't stopped thinking about this. I'm gonna apologize now to you parents that are gonna be ticked off with me because I'm gonna support the split. And I feel bad about it. I really do. But I do think it's in the best interests of the district. And that intervention, even though I agree with you, and Mr. Ambrose and I can disagree on this one, it seems like it's a carrot. It seems like that. But we'd never get it passed. You think we'd get $1,500,000 passed in a warrant article, implement intervention? 25 years ago, I said, we're at the point where we almost need a special ed, IEP, for every kid in the district. Because at any given time, any one of us could be emotionally upset. Well, here we are. But if our kids can't calculate, there is, it's not the way to go for them. They have to learn how to do fractions and multiplications. We can use our cell phones, and we can learn how to communicate without spelling correctly, without writing good English. God knows, everything's abbreviated on here. Anyways, half the time, you have to use another dictionary on LMAO, AO, or whatever. Yeah, I picked a good one, right? But be that as it may, they have to learn how to calculate. They can't get it any other way. And if we don't learn that in the elementary schools, doesn't matter anywhere else. I do not support any intervention at the high school at this point. I don't think our juniors seem like they're gonna benefit. But those elementary kids sure as hell will. And maybe they won't all be certified teachers that are interventionists. If that's all they're doing is helping kids get multiplications, fractions, and division, okay. But there's a lot, our schools are great. And I don't think we're gonna lose the culture in Bakey and Memorial. I think they will change a bit because now you're gonna have group, I know, I see the notes, I understand. But you have such dedicated staff with the youngsters. They're gonna adapt better than the rest of us are. I'm sorry, I went on a bit more than I should have, but I feel very strongly, and I do feel bad. I do feel bad. But I think it's the right way to go for our district.
Can you read that for me? So I'm not as freewheeling anyway.
Oh, well, I spoke from the heart of this one. I had notes, but it didn't...
So obviously, I've given this subject a lot of thought. I reached out to constituents. I've read, reread all the different emails that came in. I've tried to respond to all the ones that came in. I've gone back. I was not here on May 15th. I was out on a vacation. I did go back and re-watch those videos. I watched them a second time. I've gone back to NASDAQ. I've gone back to the presentations. I've looked at all the information. I've gone through all the different Facebook pages. There's half a dozen of them to get the different feel for different comments that are being made. So I understand the angst and the concern. I've gone through the frequently asked questions that the Tom administration put out. I think that the information has been good. I think it's been well put together. I do not believe that the current school organization is sustainable given the declining enrollment. What you see in NASDAQ, with what you see in the planning, with what you see in the aging of the population, I just don't see a way to go with the status quo, which was the option one, where we say, we're just going to, we're gonna do intervention, and we're going to do investments in the middle school, and we're going to have the teacher contract that was already passed, and, and, and. The result of... And, and, and the result of that will be, as, as was just stated, nothing will pass. Simply contracts will stop being passed, budgets will stop being passed, we won't be able to get forward. So I do not believe it'd be a prudent use of taxpayer dollars to invest the 1.6 million in the middle school, particularly when the high school is greatly underutilized. And given the student enrollment projections, that under, underutilization will continue. So I, I came to that conclusion. Led me to support, okay, we'll move in the seventh and eighth grade in, that would make sense. That would at least get us onto a path of a, of a more sustainable situation. And then that proposal was enhanced with the, the proposal for the elementary schools and the change in the elementary schools, which seems from what I've been reading and from listening to, to parents and reading the, the different letters and emails, is, is a larger source of angst for a larger segment of the community. So spent a lot of time thinking that through and, and what does that mean? And, and what would happen with the reconfiguration? I mean, I see the savings that are identified, I see the intervention. We haven't talked much about what I think is also important, the centers of excellence, the, the ability to have K through three together, the ability of parents to have greater options in terms of, you know, there's, there's always concerns with Boeing or people not fitting in or what have you. If you have two classes, then you don't really have a lot of options. If there's three or four classes available for that grade, you have more options. It gives parents some different options. It gets people the same grade level, teaching levels, to be able to interact together, to be able to drive issues that are, are current to that particular grades. And it helps them to, it helps them to gel around the best teaching practices for that area. I know there's concern about the move to the, having to move from third grade to fourth grade and having a move. So we can consider that of concern and I understand the concern. But it's also an opportunity. It's an opportunity for kids as they're getting to be into the third grade to look forward to a change to, I'm going to be a, with the bigger kids now, I'm, I'm moving into the next segment of my life. I'm, I'm graduating. I, I'm now a graduate at three and I'm moving into my next school. So I do think there are a lot of benefits there that we haven't really talked about together as a group. I think the savings out there also are important. I do believe in intervention. I don't consider it to be propaganda. I think that intervention allows, if you look at things as a bell curve, intervention allows the teachers to take the biggest part of that bell curve and move it to the right, being to the right, being at a, bringing it to a higher level of performance. And intervention allows you to deal with the tails. It allows you to go to the, to the lower performing students and help them so they can get to the middle, so they can move into the bell curve. To take the higher performing students and to be able to move them up further, to be able to, that they can excel and exceed even further. I think intervention helps do that and I very much support intervention for that reason. I think it allows you to move the entire population. Not just for, not just for who the interventionists are working with, but it allows the teachers to focus more on the majority of the students that are not requiring special assistance, but can move faster and more forward if they can be focused there, as opposed to diverting that teacher's attention. So I think that that's a benefit. I, I, I've heard the arguments at 100%. Every penny of that should, savings should go to intervention. I got a number of emails on that, I got a number of comments, I see a number of comments. I've gotten about the same number, if not more, comments from people without kids in the school saying, every penny of that should come back to the taxpayers. That, that shouldn't be done for that. We're already paying for teachers, we're already paying for an administration. They ought to be able to do that job. We shouldn't have to put more people in there to do it. I don't agree with that argument, but I also am, am very concerned about the tax burden. And, and I do believe that, that they have a say. And I do believe that we need them to have a say and we need them on board as a community. They fund the process. The majority of the funding comes from families or households or properties or what have you without children in the school. So you have to pull that in, that cannot just be ignored. So I support greater intervention services. Improved performance, I do believe will come from that. At the same time, I'm, I'm sensitive to the heavy burden on taxpayers and we're going to need to find the proper balance. What that proper balance will be, if it's exactly what's written on the board here in option four, I, I don't know what the proper balance will be. We'll have to take a look at what do our actuals come out in? What does the budget look like? How do we develop that budget? Where do we go from there? But ultimately, it has to be about, it isn't just the students or just the parents or just the taxpayers. It's we as a community. How do we drive better as a community? The other thing that hasn't been talked about that I believe is beneficial is, right now, our communities don't really join together until the middle school, until you get to sixth, seventh, and eighth. This will have people in the community joining together, playdates, interaction, going from K all the way up to their high school. And this is going to be important to build that community because the development plans that are out there and the opportunities are out there. Kingston's got a whole lot of real estate on 125. Newton does not have a whole lot of real estate on 125. If you look at the options, you can see there's already some digression going on between rates for the same $300,000 house. It's important to build a tighter community and interaction between these communities. And I think that this part of the school will have to do that. So for those that are upset with that thought process or disagree with that, I completely understand that. I don't think the comments that people make and have been making are unreasonable. I, I completely understand their concerns. From my perspective, taking it all into a balance, I will be in favor of the, of the move.
I also want to say that the information that has come from the public comment and the answering of the questionnaires and the emails that I've read that have been forwarded to the board have given me a lot to think about. And I've thought, some of this stuff I've been thinking about for years, some of it's new. I'm not, freely admit this, I'm not as articulate a speaker as our previous board members. So I've got a written statement, I think this is a very important subject. And I just want to get my thoughts out there as coherently as I can. So I, I ran for the school board on four goals. Stop the runaway tax increases. Make decision-making transparent. Improve academics. And deal with neglected facilities. Five years ago, when I started regularly attending school board meetings, people who questioned our school rankings were told test scores don't matter. Complicity-based education is the answer. The schools just need more money. Academics would improve as new programs were implemented, starting in kindergarten. We just had to wait until the kids in kindergarten were in the 11th grade to see the improvement. But along the way, the measurable results remained below the state average and some were dropping. People who questioned the status quo continued to bring out information illustrating that academic test results were not improving while our cost per student was rising and enrollments were dropping. Also, our cost per student was substantially higher than surrounding districts. This questioning was labeled divisive. Administration at the time said those questioning were trying to ruin the schools. Now we have an administration that recognizes that significant academic improvement are needed. This administration has done its own cost comparisons. They acknowledge that the cost per student is substantially higher than surrounding communities. Community also has an independent study on the dropping enrollments of our facility's usage. This NASDAQ report was presented to the community in September of 2018. The public has had significant input since then, including questionnaires and multiple public forums. So tonight, we're here to decide what to do. Some want to remain status quo with no intervention. Some want to delay the implementation of any changes. Some want to implement the intervention, but not the savings. And some want all the savings to go to the taxpayers. Recently, the administration presented cost estimates of implementing the intervention, including facilities improvements, but not the savings as an additional $786 a year in property taxes on a $300,000 house in Newton and an additional $597 for a comparable house in Newton, in Kingston. The historical reality, as people have noted, is voters do not support budget increases like that. On the other hand, if the savings are implemented, but the facilities and interventions are ignored, that would save taxpayers about as much. But none of these options are sustainable long-term. So the board has to decide what is the best for students and the community. The administration has explained that substantial benefits for students multiple times. The NASDAQ study shows the issue with the facilities and the declining enrollments. The administration has provided the cost of intervention plus maintaining facilities. Each option is very expensive, including doing nothing. Financial pressure is one of the greatest stresses on families. Based on the per-student costs in neighboring communities, our taxpayers have been overpaying for years. That cost combined with comparative underperformance of our schools puts our students' market values of our homes and our community at a disadvantage. The superintendent has demonstrated to me that he is a man of his word. He has stated that multiple, multiple academic and financial benefits to be derived from closing the middle school and consolidating the elementary schools. He and his team of administrators have addressed hundreds of questions regarding these options. Any of the proposed changes are still over a year away from implementation. More than 12 months to gather additional input from all the people who have concerns and finalize the details to result in a successful transition. I also believe the superintendent, when he says he knows the interventions that are needed, these are not experimental. This will not be making kids into lab rats as some previous, more experimental implementations have been described by students over the years. These interventions are tested and we are told they've been implemented with excellent results. So I support the administration's proposal. I also see my job here, however, as a watchdog. I trust, but will also verify. I'm going to be watching the costs and monitoring the results. I'm sure many of you here tonight will be watching too. I'm going to want to see regular presentations showing that the interventions are working and the costs are being managed. I also want to know what is being done to make improvements to anything that isn't working. And continued public comment will be a big help to see that nothing gets overlooked. We have 12 months to finalize the changes before any major implementation. We're also talking about a lot of money. I believe the costs also need to be phased in. In my opinion, the majority of costs should be incurred as savings are realized. Based on community feedback I've received, the implementation to be fair to taxpayers at the minimum should be a zero increase budget. Even after slowing budget growth the past couple of years, our school district is spending 14% more per student than surrounding towns. So all of these things considered, my vote is to support the alternative option. That plan will provide the financial support for the greatly needed interventions as well as provide well-deserved financial relief to families and other taxpayers. Thank you.
I've also been thinking about this for quite a while and what I wanted to communicate. So I also have a written statement because I wanted to get it right. I do want to thank those who reached out with their thoughts over the past several weeks. We've heard from people with a variety of opinions, from those who urge us to move forward with the process to those who urge us to delay. Some want us to reinvest any savings while others want the savings to be returned as tax relief. The feedback has been pretty evenly divided between those in support and those who are not. I appreciate everyone's position and I understand that this is a significant and emotional decision. It's emotional for me as well. My children spent their elementary years at Bakie, almost a decade, from start to finish. I volunteered in their classrooms and with the PTA and I appreciated the dedication of the teachers and the sense of community that supported them throughout those years. I'm sure the experience is the same in the Memorial community. Those experiences make this sort of change very difficult to contemplate. But the bottom line is what's best for the education of the students. We have an unacceptable number of students not attaining grade-level performance, especially in the earlier grades, and a lack of ability to progress in the outcomes for students overall. We have an identified need for increased intervention support to address this, which requires a significant investment of funds. We have a middle school that needs a hefty investment to maintain it, while we have declining enrollments resulting in excess capacity there and in our other schools. We also have a community of taxpayers who feel overburdened and are unlikely to respond positively to the magnitude of budget increase that would be required to maintain status quo with respect to our facilities and to make the changes that address the educational needs we've identified. The proposal to consolidate the elementary grades into single schools and move grades seven and eight to the high school helps us meet those needs. It allows us to maximize the efficient use of our resources while freeing up funding that will enable us to fund those educational needs without an additional burden on our taxpayers. And there are even more impactful educational benefits. It also enables us to provide more consistency in those elementary grades by having all of our district students and their teachers grouped by grade in a single building. Developmentally, four- to eight-year-olds have different needs from nine-to-11-year-olds. And each school will be able to tailor education delivery more closely to those developmental ages. Teachers at each grade level will also be able to work more collaboratively than they're able to when they're divided into separate buildings. We have an option to delay for more time to study and discuss. To those advocating for that, we've heard you and we understand. This is a big decision and we all want to get it right. I hope everyone realizes the tremendous amount of thought, research, study, and deliberation that's gone into this process. For the past year, there have been many presentations for the board members and the public to help call out the factors that are critical for a decision like this. And the bottom line remains, how to best meet the educational needs of the students with the resources available to us without creating an additional burden on our taxpayers. Now we have a proposal that our administration has confidence in. Response to Intervention, RTI, is an established, widely utilized program with research to support it. RTI programs generally use scientifically-based instruction for all students, keep track of student progress using valid and reliable measures, use data to identify students who don't meet well-developed standards and benchmarks, and then provide those students with specially-designed, evidence-based, and intensive intervention. So the question becomes, how much longer should we wait to put it into place? For the students who struggle, who lack the reading or math skills they need to grow and be successful, how much more time should we take while they lose more and more ground? For the students who need a more rigorous pace, who become bored because their needs aren't being met due to a lack of enrichment resources? And for the teachers, is it fair to leave them in limbo waiting for a decision sometime down the road? I believe we've been provided with the information to make an informed decision and it's not right to kick this can down the road any longer. I have faith in the superintendent and our administrators and I support the plan they've presented to us. Should the board vote in favor of the proposal, keep in mind that it's just the beginning of the process. There will be time for careful consideration and opportunity for involvement as the logistics are reviewed and plans are fine-tuned and finalized. Our administrators have already shown their willingness to work with the community to address the concerns that have already been raised. I hope the community will come together for the sake of the students and the pursuit of the best outcomes for them. Thank you.
I'd like to give a short timeline to begin my comments, which might be helpful to explain that the process has been deliberative and not rushed. But first, I'd like to mention that as a teacher, dual enrollment teacher who handles high school as well as community college students, I've never considered the building or classroom in which I found myself especially important to myself and my students' learning. I taught at Quantit Hut in August when it was 93 inside. I taught in modern classrooms and I taught at a rented-out conference room at a Verizon center down the road when my district rented short-term facilities. And in all cases, the quality of the instructor, to my mind, has always proven the most important element in a district. element in a district. So my timeline, I just would like to mention that this has been an ongoing process. I noticed the puzzle: our towns had growing tax burdens but falling enrollments; yet growth in spending per pupil was not providing our children with improving academic outcomes. The paradox was much discussed around town. In 2016, I joined the board and asked the question: our students are bright, cooperative, and motivated. Why weren't Sandborne's academic data matching or exceeding that of top-performing districts? Particularly when our per-pupil annual costs exceeded those of high-performing districts. A new superintendent, Mr. Ambrose, was hired. He began exploring our academic stagflation, high prices but without increased results. Our first task was data gathering. In December 2017, the board approved $30,000 for the New England School Development Council, NASDAQ, to conduct a study, quote, "looking at enrollments, cost per student, and future recommendations for facility use." Board minutes, December 6, 17. In spring of 2018, NASDAQ toured our facilities, asked questions, and conferred with stakeholders. Then in the summer of 2018, the district publicized widely our first board meeting would feature a presentation of the NASDAQ findings. On August 15, John Kennedy and Karen DeLuque of NASDAQ presented their AD page report, which was well-attended. The audience listened, asked questions. The report was posted online, as were board minutes and video. On September 19, the board held another meeting on the findings. The workshop entitled "Community Discussion of NASDAQ Schools' Facility Study Options" was well-attended, led by moderator Todd DeMitchell. What did NASDAQ find? Please recall their task was looking at enrollments, cost per student, and recommendations for facility use. The NASDAQ study reported that our district was excessively wealthy in facilities, school buildings, but poor in its support staff and educational programs. Rising costs and rising taxes would not be sustainable in light of declining enrollment, but adjustment of our capital-labor ratio could be done. NASDAQ explained nine possible configurations for facilities reorganization to correct the imbalance, liberate funds to improve learning, and accommodate long-range projected enrollment drops. I want to emphasize the following, and everyone should pay attention. Of the nine possible configurations, six of the nine, 67% of the options involve grade regrouping or grouping of grades across our two elementary schools. Actually, there were 10 total options, eight of which involved regrouping of the elementary grades. I mentioned also two more on pages 57 and 58. So 80% of them encouraged us to consolidate grade grouping within elementary school buildings. I mention this first because we've had, we've been said, told the process has been rushed or hidden. The change is, in fact, overdue. The NASDAQ study has been available since August, and the options discussed at board meetings, budget meetings, and forums have been looked at very carefully. What configuration would give us the biggest bang for our educational buck? That is, this, to me, is an emergency situation and has been going on for some time. We are in urgent need of facilities reorganization. When I looked at the Shaker School District's results, they have twice the scores that we have across grades. They spend less, they have slightly larger class sizes, but they have enormously greater paraprofessional assistance in the classroom. And that's what we'd like to do with our reorganization. The second point I'd like to make is that the NASDAQ report repeatedly emphasized that, quote, "grade-span reconfiguration affords facilitation of collaboration, coordination, and communication amongst grade-level educators." The important benefit, this important benefit was also emphasized by NASDAQ for the junior-senior high school complex, and they referenced the math and science programs in particular, pages 66 and 70. While they acknowledge variables such as busing would need attention, and I remain highly concerned about use of our high school library by junior and high school students and system athletics, as well as busing, they were encouraging us to reconfigure the elementary grade, and this option dominated the NASDAQ menu. In short, the possibility of elementary reorganization has been front and center since August, and warrant Article 8 was passed with a large two-thirds majority and was billed as allowing us more flexibility on both programming and facilities. And we urged that this would advance student learning or being fiscally manageable to citizens. I see enormous gains, and I'm very excited about the prospect of reorganizing our facilities and regrouping our grades pre-K to three at Bakersfield and four to six at Memorial, and I'm excited to vote in support of the option. It allows sharing of best practices, greater synergy mentoring among specialized educators at the same grade levels. Our support services can be delivered more efficiently by specialists and interventionists for specific grades and economizes on those specialist time. Parents have a greater choice of a teacher at each grade level that best fits their child's temperament and personality, and K-12 friendships will be developed among students, which should help reduce bullying. More importantly, our towns will form greater bonds. Newton and Kingston have become Balkanized, and I've sensed that. But we are not two towns, we are one district. I've heard and feared we're losing an elementary school, but I feel we are ignoring the huge benefits our students will realize, including saved funds, which can be reallocated to early literacy intervention. I have a few more pages on that, but I won't go through them. I consider my vote a bargain with the superintendent and with the communities. The social contract I am supporting is a reduction in unneeded facilities in exchange for greatly improved elementary-grade literacy, which would lift all assessment results K-12. 90% of our high school students currently are projected to meet or satisfy the indicators given in our new framework for career and college readiness. I am not concerned about our high school students, but I am very concerned about the elementary grades. I also am concerned that we will have, we will lack funds if we continue the status quo to improve our SST programs, our dual enrollment programs, our enrichment programs, and we've even explored the option of offering an associate's degree down the road. Early intervention should be a successful supplement and not a substitute for traditional classroom instruction. Jack Kozak and others have expressed concerns about this, and I can assure you, we will be watching the academic data carefully to ensure, over the next few years, we create dividends from the program. Finally, I have reviewed data on several districts that have successfully migrated to a single junior-senior high school campus: Newmarket, Sunapee, Borum, Roveton, Profile, Bethlehem, and others. All of them have been successful in their reorganization, and their math and English proficiency levels are strong and are seeing improvements in recent years. The argument for reorganization is one of best practices. What has worked effectively at high-performing school districts: fewer buildings, modified class sizes, with much more academic program investment. My goal is to deprive Shaker District of another School Board of the Year award and claim it for ours. As Mr. Ambrose has pointed out, staying the same is easier, but it also means the same results. Thank you.
Okay, it's always good to be last. Everybody else said what I had planned on saying. Dr. Brown talked about the NASDAQ. That was a book this size. This is the proposal for reorganization. Along with this, along with this, along with this, along with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of emails, thousands and thousands and thousands of hours of work. This has not really been a rush to judgment. Dr. Brown talked about back in 2016, when she and I joined the board, we were elected to board at the same time. So my question is, do we need intervention? Well, if you look at the study that we received a couple of weeks ago, you saw that 34 students coming out of the first grade were behind, and that number changed within one or two all the way to the eighth grade. That conforms with all the studies nationally. You're behind in the first grade, you're behind in the eighth grade. That's what we're trying to eliminate. You say, "slow down," and I understand that, but what I hear when you say, "slow down," are those students who need this intervention not getting the intervention. Because there's no way that people are going to vote $1.4 million for intervention unless we can show them some savings. And no means no in this town and in this state. So if they say no, then we couldn't do it if we wanted to. So what do we say to those students who are behind? Sorry, kids, but you're just going to have to keep on going the way it was? I was one of those kids. My mother walked me to school when I was younger, and I finally figured out that if I didn't go, she was going to keep on walking me. I hated school. I was a terrible student. Thank God for you, United States, son. So I know what it's like to go to school every day, cringing because I wasn't prepared and I was behind. It is awful. We cannot allow those children keep doing that. So if you wait two years, the 34 that come in next year, and the year after, and the year after, plus the ones that are already in the system, are suffering. And we can do it at no cost. Because the savings we have from the closing of the middle school is going to compensate that. Our budget is up high because we've got five buildings that we have to maintain. We're putting money into facilities we should be putting into education. Our job is to educate kids. That's what we'll be doing with this money. I've talked about this book to the people here. Some of you may have read it. It's called Who Moved My Cheese? If you haven't read it, please read it. It's about change and the anxiety of change, and this is anxiety. But I got to tell you, this is not, how do I put it? This is an improvement. We're not changing anything. The children will be going into the Bakersfield School and the Memorial School, and the teachers will be meeting them at the door, and the parents will be meeting them at the door, and they'll be getting help from those teachers in that classroom. But we're, hopefully, and I got to say hopefully because, let's face it, folks, a lot of this is anxiety. Your crystal ball, my crystal ball, you know? We're doing the best we can based on what we know now. And if some of you are my students, how many times did you hear me say, you make a decision, you find out later on it was the wrong decision, but if you can look back and say, "based on what I knew then, it was the best decision I could make." Things change, but you can't say, "oh, boy, did I mess up." Based on what I knew then. So based on what we know now, we're going to be making a decision. But nobody's got a crystal ball. But I am both anxious and on two levels. I'm anxious that this is really going to work, and I'm anxious that, oh, gee, what if it doesn't? All the studies say it does. I've actually gone to teachers that I know, former teachers, whose schools did this, and the test scores, they said, went up phenomenally. I can only tell you that you put us here. You know? The easiest decision I could ever make, I put 15 years into board selection, I used to tell people, "I'll do anything you want to pay for." But the easiest decision I could make would be, hey, let's put it on a war council, let the people decide. See, I'm washing my hands like that guy did a couple thousand years ago, huh? Let the people decide. That's not what you elected me for. Anybody can make easy decisions. This is a tough, tough, tough decision for all of us. There's a saying in politics: every decision you make, you're going to tick off half the people, eventually you're going to tick off more than half the people, and you're out. But that's not what you elected me for. We have gone through this for months and months and decisions and discussions, and you've heard me say right in this room, everybody knows what to do with the bull except the guy that's got the bull by the horns. And right now, we've got the bull by the horns, and we have to make the decision. But we didn't make this in a vacuum. Think about if this was a couple of years ago. Would you have been able to email the superintendent, have him answer back? Thousands of emails. We've done everything I can think of. If I hadn't, I'd have done it. This, to me, is an improvement for the students and to help those who need the help the most. You know, some kids, you give them a flashlight and put them in a closet with a book, they're going to learn. It's the kids who hate school, the kids who have a difficult time in school. That's what this is for. We can no longer let them fall through the cracks. And this intervention, I believe, like a facet on a diamond, it's a facet. Keep on putting good things on that diamond, the diamond's going to be, hopefully, more brilliant and be worth more money. Because that's what we're preparing our kids for, the future. I can say a lot more, but, you know, I think we've exhausted it. Any further discussion by the board? Move the motion?
Mr. Chairman, move the motion.
Okay. Here we go. All in favor of, do we need to read the motion, or do we know there's option four? We know it's...
I have it here, and you wish me to read it.
Phyllis, you need it written again? Okay. Okay, so I think we all know the motion?
Yep.
All in favor? So no opposed and no abstention, so that's unanimous.
Oh, thank God.
Now, we're on to number nine, which is the meeting agenda. I have nine agendas items for the next meeting. I know you don't have them, it'd not be a regret for me.
That for next, is it for June 12?
Yes. Board goals is on, I'll read them.
It is, I put it on there.
School board subcommittee dates, budget calendar, you're going to talk about the PD.
Yep.
Fund balance, goal setting, primex insurance, authorization to hire for summer. We know that we do that every year, right? We'll talk about that then. Internship and the rocket launch video. Larry, were you involved in that one?
I am involved in that one.
Larry's a rocketeer. He's got his own rockets.
And I will enjoy that one.
And now we've got the climbing wall, Phyllis.
And Vicki Parity-Gabe will be here to deal with that.
Okay, the climbing wall.
I'll be ready.
Hey, I'm just kidding, by the way.
Should we put our arm around him?
And if we can have a sample climbing wall, and Ellie can try it first?
I don't think so.
We have some policies coming up.
Yeah, we have policies, too, at the next meeting.
Okay, we've got some policies, Phyllis?
Yes.
Okay, and do you want to talk about the PD move?
I'll talk about that next week, but it can wait. You don't need to do it now.
Okay. Anybody have any more business they would like to discuss?
You can open up for one more public comment session.
We decided not to do that.
I've got one question about the proposed agenda. When you say "goal setting," does that mean we're going to set goals, or we're going to talk about setting goals?
We're going to set goals.
Okay.
Because I need direction from you, and I want to work with you on goals now because there's work to be done over the summer.
Okay.
So if any of the board would like to email me ideas, I could try to draft something up.
Doesn't that policy say that we have to get together for goal setting?
You do, you do, but I'm happy to collect and kind of get a presentation set up.
I sent them to you.
You did. Pam already sent me some ideas. Yep. You might want to resend, but it's okay. We can process it.
Last one of those thousands of minutes.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay, so I'm going to make the announcements. The next Sandborne Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, June 12, 2019, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the library of Sandborne Regional High School. We do have a non-public, so if I can have a motion to non-public...
Mr. Chairman, do we get a little break?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Larry, I'm sorry, what?
Do we have a break?
Yes, because the people are going to leave anyway, but I need the motion first.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move into non-public session RSA 91-A, colon, 3, Roman number 2, C and D. I won't give you Charlie and Delta.
Okay, second someone?
Second.
Pick one. Larry?
Aye.
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 It's okay to be honest.
Aye. Rule call unanimous.